Today's invocation is led by Pastor Raymond Duvall from Beachside Fellowship Church. Please stand.
Lord God, we rejoice in you today and thank you for your goodness to us. We know that you love us and that you love Panama City Beach and that you have a wonderful plan and purpose for our community. Today, Lord, as we meet, we ask for your guidance. Let the words of our mouths and the meditations of our heart be acceptable to you, Lord. We pray for every leader in Panama City Beach, those that are serving, Lord, on this council. We ask that you would grant them wisdom and strength, Lord, to carry out your purpose and plan, that you would give them divine inspiration. We thank you, Lord, for the employees of the city government and those that are being honored today. We thank you for their service, Lord God, and those that serve in the fire department, Lord God, and EMTs and all of our police. We thank you, Lord, for supernaturally protecting them, carrying out the duties that they carry out. Lord, we thank you for your goodness and grace. We thank you for peace in this meeting, your blessing upon us and Panama City Beach, and we give you the praise in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Today's Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Commander Bob Hoffman, American Legion Post 402, United States Marine Corps, retired.
May I show me the pledge allegiance to the flag of our country?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Bob. Now move on to community announcements. This Saturday, November fifteenth, there is the Cops in Kids at Aaron Besant Park. Also Saturday, the fifteenth, is the Salty Farm Benefit Concert and Outreach. That will be at Frank Brown Park. On next Saturday, the twenty-second, there is Metal Madness U.S. Road Running. That will be on Gales Trails. City offices will be closed November twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth for Thanksgiving. Friday, November twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth, Beach Home for the Holidays at Aaron Besant Park. It's always a great event. And then on Thursday, December eleventh, is our last city council meeting of the year. That's at nine AM here at City Hall. And if you haven't finished your Christmas shopping, on Saturday, December twentieth, the Last Minute Market will be at Aaron Besant Park. Okay? We now move on to the approval of the meeting minutes.
Motion to approve?
Right.
Ms. Vazani?
Vice Mayor German.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Casto.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Coburn.
Yes.
Councilman Register.
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor Tedder.
Yes, ma'am. Moving on to item F, Approval of Agenda and Additions or Delays. Any modifications to the agenda?
No, sir.
Motion approved.
Second.
Ms. Vazani?
Vice Mayor German.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Casto.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Coburn.
Yes.
Councilman Register.
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor Tedder.
Yes, ma'am. Now, our presentations will be led by Vice Mayor Michael German.
So our first presentation today is for Riley Thor. Riley, come on up.
So we have a stand-in.
Oh. A stand-in, huh? Okay. So you can brag to Riley about it, then. The mayor, city council, and staff of the city of Panama City Beach extend the sincerest appreciation to Riley Thor for dedicated service and commitment to the city of Panama City Beach for five years. There you go.
Sir Riley is on duty, and I just want to say he's very, exemplifies what beach safety is all about. In five years, he went and got his paramedic. He became a supervisor with our staff. And on top of that, just recently, Hannah, our other supervisor, them together sit on national boards that represent lifeguards and dictate where the service is going nationally and get influence on laws and best practices. So your beach safety team out here has grown tremendously with the help of the council and city administration, and they're really making their footprint nationally to make this beach better and represents well. So thank you.
All right. And our next person is Tabitha Haddel. Now, if you don't know, Tabitha is in charge of probably one of the toughest departments in the city with dispatch for the PD. And we do, I mean, I personally and this entire council appreciates everything that you do. Does not go unnoticed. The mayor, city council, and staff of the city of Panama City Beach extend the sincerest appreciation to Tabitha Haddel for dedicated service and commitment to the city of Panama City Beach for fifteen years. Thank you, Tabitha, very much.
Well, obviously, you guys know I take every opportunity to brag on my people. Tabitha, what's the average career span for a dispatcher?
Two to three years.
Two to three years. How long have you been doing this now?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five years. Twenty-five years. The amount of people that you've saved, helped, it's countless. And to say you have a public service heart is understatement. So thank you for everything you do. Thank you to your team for everything they do. I know a lot of times you work in the background, but you are always at the forefront of our mission. So thank you, Tabitha. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Councilman Casto? Your microphone on. All right. So we did receive feedback at the last meeting that some folks were hard to hear on the microphone, so it's kind of hard to tell when you're up here, but we'll be attentive to that up here at the council. We move on to public comment on the consent agenda and non-agenda business. Please come up, state your name, address myself, or the council as a whole. Please keep your comments limited to city business. You'll have three minutes.
Well, good morning to you all. Most of you know me as Mary Lindberg, the previous commander of Veterans of Foreign Wars Post Ten Triple Nickel located on Ashley Drive near Conservation Park here in Panama City Beach. VFW Post Ten Triple Nickel has taken on another public service as the location sponsor role for Rees-Across America at Kent Forest Lawn Cemetery on Twenty-third Street in Panama City. Why did we go to Panama City? Because the beach has no cemeteries. Myself and fellow veteran Anna Minor are the location coordinators for Rees-Across America event there. The mission of Rees-Across America is to remember the fallen, honor those who have served and their families, and teach the next generation the value of freedom. Rees-Across America is the organization most recognized for placing over three million veterans' graves at over forty-nine hundred locations nationally and abroad on National Rees-Across America Day. Rees-Across America is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization founded to continue and expand the annual wreath laying ceremony at Arlington National Cemetery, which was begun by main businessman, Morrel Westchester, in nineteen ninety-two. However, the work to recognize our nation's veterans, military families, active-duty service members is a year-long event. The organization's mission is carried out in part each year by coordinating these wreath laying ceremonies in December at Arlington, as well as the thousands of veteran cemeteries and other locations in all fifty states and beyond. Locally, Kent Forest Lawn has over thirteen hundred veterans' graves to have wreaths laid. Many of those veterans were members of Ten Triple Nickel. The number of wreaths requires a fundraising level of over twenty-two thousand dollars, as each wreath is seventeen dollars. My goal today is to raise awareness for this great organization and ask for your support, not only for Kent Forest Lawn, but also my colleague, Bob Hoffman, American Legion 402 sponsors West Bay Cemetery, also in Bay County. I have flyers and sponsorship sheets for each of you, and ask that you make sure that the people in your ward know about this great organization. There's a little QR code that enables individuals to go online and purchase wreaths for a veteran's grave in Kent Forest Lawn. This year's date for both Kent Forest Lawn and West Bay is December the thirteenth. Kent Forest Lawn, our ceremony will begin at nine AM, and then wreaths will be laid on each veteran's grave. Kent Forest, or West Bay is at two in the afternoon, so you can make both. As each wreath is laid, we ask that the veteran's name is said and pause for a short moment of silence after placing the wreath. I look forward to seeing a large presence at Kent Forest Lawn from Panama City Beach, as it is the largest perpetual care cemetery in Bay County, and I am certain that most of you know someone that is buried there. Another hat I wear-
Ms. Lindberg, your three minutes is up. Can you wrap it up?
I will leave the flyers and the additional flyer for Anchor Lutheran Church.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Lindberg.
Good seeing you again.
Further public comment?
Morning, Mayor Tedder, council members. My name is Stanley Stefansik. Before we get started, will you be giving me any additional time since you interrupted my time last time, Mayor Tedder?
Yeah, I think the interruption, since it was relevant to city business, we'll give you an extra thirty seconds.
Thank you, Mayor Tedder. I believe it's about a minute that it comprised of, but thank you for the thirty seconds. First off, I want to apologize for violating the rules of the meeting. About two meetings ago, I brought in a gold key, pulled it out. That was out of ignorance. I want to apologize. I made a mistake out of ignorance, and I want you all to know I respect you and I respect the rules. I apologize for that. Second thing I want to say is, Mayor Tedder, I want to thank you for addressing the things that we, the citizens, bring up. That's one of the reasons I voted for you, previous mayor. I don't think ever did that, especially when he heard things he didn't care for. So I want to encourage more of that, but I want to thank you for that, Mayor Tedder. I listen to when you ask the questions of the individuals on your staff. That's very important. I encourage more of that. I'm going to clarify a couple of things. Got nothing against Councilmember Casto, nothing personal against him. He may not remember introducing himself to me eighteen years ago, not in this room, but in the same forum in the previous room. I remember that. I also have nothing personal against Mr. Whitman. I may have made some comments, but let's make something very clear. The city council that voted to fire Mr. O'Rourke, and with you asking the attorney to the city attorney, clearly that cost the city money with the settlement. That cost we, the citizens, money that the two council members sitting to your right voted to fire Mr. O'Rourke. And then after Mr. O'Rourke was fired, the educational requirement for the city manager position was lowered from a master's degree to a high school degree significantly indicating pre-selection. Those members that were here at the time bear that responsibility. I think they brought tremendous shame upon the city. Just so everybody knows why I make some of the statements I make. I think Mr. Whitman may need to be under investigation for his involvement with hit-and-run Councilmember Casto's incident on August twentieth. I think it needs to be addressed. I want every one of you, I request every single one of you council members to tell me, did you watch the videos I sent you? Did you read all the information that I printed off on paper and left hard copies for the five of you? Did you? Let's hear what you all have to say about that. I'm asking every single one of you, including the two of you hypocrites that fired the previous city manager. And why did they fire him? Because he uncovered improprieties, he uncovered improprieties and wrongdoing. And what did they do? They fired him. And now, when it comes time to hold somebody accountable, you all are being hip, well, two of you are being hypocrites, and the rest of you are being cowards. It's time to take action. If you watch the videos, you'll see the state trooper getting deeply frustrated, Councilmember Casto's comments to her. It's amazing he didn't get arrested. She matched up the bumpers, all the things in the video I requested you to watch. If you did not watch it, you have shown your bias. I believe you cutting me off showed tremendous bias, Mayor Tedder.
Mr. Stefani, you have thirty seconds.
Thank you for the additional time. I wish you well with your additional businesses. It's time to take action. You all get four hundred and fifty dollars a month vehicle allowance.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Stefani. Further public comment?
Hi, I'm Jim Vickery, owner of a townhouse at Beachside West. We were here a few months ago talking about CWR, contracting company. We thought we had reached an agreement with them as far as on repairing our, the exterior of our retaining wall and for them to paint it. Couple of weeks ago, we all get letters wanting us to sign a release that we will not hold them responsible for any issues later if something happens to that wall, and also a nondisclosure agreement, which nobody's going to sign. Again, you know, you all have told us that that's between us and CWR, but you all hired CWR, so we're looking for a little help from the city council. What we're planning on doing is going ahead and repairing our side of the wall and painting it. The exterior of the wall will remain the way it is now and look terrible the way it does now. We're not going to touch it. CWR is responsible for that, and we feel like they should be doing it without having to sign this nondisclosure agreement and holding them not responsible for anything.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Vickery. Further public comment?
I couldn't make my printer work, so I'm going to read from my phone. I apologize. My name is Marty Kenshin. I own Unit Eighteen in Beachside Townhomes located at seventeen-one-thirty-five Front Beach Road. My husband and I are among the four families who are original owners who still own in there. We purchased, we signed a contract to build in ninety-two. Hurricane Opal destroyed the entire complex in ninety-five. We got back in in ninety-eight. We were the first to get a certificate of occupancy. We lived above Atlanta at that time, came and went once a month. We have never rented. I have been always very involved in maintenance and caring for whatever goes on in Beachside Townhomes. And I have met with the various members of the group that has been doing the roadwork. We had just spent five hundred dollars having our sprinkler systems that we had been required to put in and maintain by the city, because before we could get a CO, after we rebuilt, everybody who owned in there had to sign a commitment that we would landscape and maintain in front of our wall, because it was what you saw as you came down south on Seventy-nine into Front Beach Road. We had a traffic light, now we have that dreaded roundabout. We have never, we have no right-of-way for us to leave our complex. It's horrible for those of us who own in there. It is unsafe with that road that peels off to the right going north, and then you're constantly having to watch both. But my point today is that I've tried to do everything possible to get CWR to recognize that they are responsible for the damage they've done to our wall. They have piled up dirt in front of one hole. I had a contractor come to give us a quote. He couldn't find it. If I had not had the pictures that I had taken all along, you would not know that it was there. They say that all those cracks in our wall were there before they started working. They can prove it by Google Maps. I've got invoices from Lavoy Anderson, Anderson and Associates, and you probably all know him, because he's been a general contractor in this area for many, many years. He's now retired. But where we paid to have the cracks that were surface cracks repaired and painted the wall in nineteen, and then in twenty-one, the roadwork in front of us started. They started digging trenches and putting in pipes and power lines and whatever it was, and they would then compact the soil to the point that they would make the interior of my townhouse shake, the walls. Lightweight things would, if I just had them on a tack or something, would come off the wall. I would run out there and tell them, you've got to stop this. There is no way on God's green earth, pardon the expression, that CWR is not responsible for the damage that has been done to our entrance wall.
Ma'am, your three minutes is up.
I understand. I tried to take this release of liability form to, I tried to meet with Mr. Whitman to have him look at it and discuss it, and I was told that he was not interested.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Kenshin. Further public comment? Okay. Mr. Whitman, is there anything you can address from the public comment?
I just want to thank Mary, the former commander, to come up and recognizing Rees-Across America, that's a big project. I support that. As far as Jim and Mary, I'll get back with our council member on the civil actions against CWA Roberts on the wall. And I've never turned down a meeting, so I don't know who informed her. I was not interested in that.
Okay. Ma'am?
One down with me?
Ma'am? Sir? Okay. So you're going to meet about the proposed settlement with CWR?
I will talk to our legal attorney again on that.
Okay. All right. Any comments from the council?
Mayor, I would just like to say this case, this incident that Mr. Stefani keeps referring to, this case has been dismissed. And anybody that wants to can go online and look at the details. It was a minor incident, and it's been resolved and dismissed. That's all I have to say about it.
Okay. I'll say for the wreaths, it's a very important project. Thank you for announcing and inviting us here. Thank Councilman Casto for addressing that. I certainly did review, and I reviewed toward an eye of city business, and I didn't see anything relevant in city business. I did talk to Mr. Whitman about the phone call, and that's entirely appropriate. We've addressed the CWR stuff. Okay?
The CWR stuff, I'd like to have follow-up. I don't know if that needs to be in our one-on-ones that we do or what, but I'd like, I sit up here and preach about beautification. I don't want a wall left not finished, especially that's aesthetically appealing to guests as we welcome in Front Beach Road, and then also if it affects our residents, we need to make sure that we're leaning in to make sure that that's, so I'd just like more updates and more clarity on that.
Okay. Yeah, I certainly think it's useful to understand fully how the liability works when we have a contractor and how it works with those who make claims against that contractor. That's it. Moving on to the consent agenda. Ms. Vazani, did you take a drink of a glass of water?
Resolution twenty-six twenty-one, a resolution of the city of Panama City Beach, Florida, appointing Melinda Mendy Lawyer as deputy city clerk. Resolution twenty-six twenty-two, a resolution of the city of Panama City Beach, Florida, approving the purchase of one Dodge Durango, nine Ford F-150 Responder crew cabs, one Ford Transit cargo van for the police department from Allen J Automotive Management, Inc., doing business as Allen J Fleet Sales, in the total amount of eight-hundred-and-twenty-three-thousand-nine-hundred-and-sixty-seven dollars and fifty cents, and agreeing to be bound by the terms and conditions of the city of Tallahassee's agreement governing that purchase. Resolution twenty-six twenty-three, a resolution of the city of Panama City Beach, Florida, approving the purchase of ten cubicles from Image Works Commercial Interiors, an authorized reseller of Steelcase, Inc., in the total amount of fifty-five-thousand-four-hundred-and-thirty-four dollars and seventy cents, and agreeing to be bound by the terms and conditions of the state of New York contract governing that purchase. Resolution twenty-six twenty-four, a resolution of the city of Panama City Beach, Florida, approving a lighting agreement with Florida Power and Light Company for the installation and maintenance of citywide lighting facilities excluding Front Beach Road and Panama City Beach Parkway for conversion and upgrade from HPS to LED. Resolution twenty-six twenty-five, a resolution of the city of Panama City Beach, Florida, approving task order number twenty-two-six PWRH-01 with Hafen Associates, Inc., for engineering design services for the Front Beach Road mid-block crosswalk improvements, in the total amount of ninety-seven-thousand-two-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars. Resolution twenty-six twenty-six, a resolution of the city of Panama City Beach, Florida, approving the purchase of one Freightliner VAC truck from VAC Con, Inc., for the Public Works and CRA Departments, in the total amount of five-hundred-and-forty-four-thousand dollars, five-hundred-and-forty-four-thousand-five-hundred-and-seventy-four dollars, and agreeing to be bound by the terms and conditions of the Sourcewell contract governing that purchase. Resolution twenty-six twenty-seven, a resolution of the city of Panama City Beach, Florida, approving an agreement with Green South Solutions, LLC, for sludge hauling and disposal services for the wastewater treatment facility, and approving purchases under the agreement for fiscal year twenty-twenty-six, in an amount not to exceed three-hundred-and-ninety-thousand dollars. Resolution twenty-six thirty-two, a resolution of the city of Panama City Beach, Florida, approving Amendment One to the CRA Landscaping Maintenance Services Agreement with Green Earth Southeast, LLC, for the addition of CRA Segment Three, and approving reoccurring total expenditures, annual expenditures, under the contract, in the total amount not to exceed two-hundred-and-fifty-four-thousand-three-hundred-and-ninety-eight dollars and forty-seven cents. Resolution twenty-six thirty-three, a resolution of the city of Panama City Beach, Florida, approving the purchase of one twenty-two-six Peterbilt five-thirty-seven knuckle boom truck for the Public Works Department, in the total amount of two-hundred-and-thirty-six-thousand-one-hundred-and-eight dollars, and agreeing to be bound by the terms and conditions of the Sourcewell contract governing that purchase. Resolution twenty-six thirty-four, a resolution of the city of Panama City Beach, Florida, approving agreement with Holly Development Corporation for the construction of a fleet maintenance building, in the total amount of five-hundred-and-sixty-eight-thousand-fifty-two dollars and seventeen cents, and agreeing to be, oh, and authorizing the execution qualifying change orders, in the total amount not to exceed five, fifty-six-thousand-eight-hundred-and-five dollars. Resolution twenty-six thirty-five, a resolution of the city of Panama City Beach, Florida, approving stop-loss insurance rankings and authorizing city to negotiate a contract with ISU via Blue Cross and Blue Shield of Florida, Inc., for stop-loss insurance. Resolution twenty-six thirty-six, a resolution of the city of Panama City Beach, Florida, approving an assignment of the contractor for the Frank Brown Park Miracle League Pavilion and Restroom to Ideal Development Concepts, LLC. And Number Thirteen, revision of the master audit list to remove items, obsolete items.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Vazani. Here, I'm the one who didn't turn my microphone back on. Thank you, Ms. Vazani. Is there a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve. Ms. Vazani, please call roll.
Vice Mayor German.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Casto.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Coburn.
Yes.
Councilman Register.
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor Tedder.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, we now move on to the regular agenda. Regular agenda item number one is ordinance number sixteen sixty-eight. Mr. Davis?
An ordinance of the city of Panama City Beach, Florida, repealing Chapter Twenty of the city's Code of Ordinances, amending the city's land development code relating to applicability of the land development code, amending Sections Ten dot oh-four dot zero-zero, Ten dot oh-five, and Ten dot oh-six of the city's land development code, providing for approval of Platts and replats by an administrative authority and creating a definition for that role, repealing all ordinances in conflict, providing for severability, scrivener's errors, liberal interpretation, modifications, codification, and providing for an effective date.
Okay. Is there any public comment on regular agenda item one? Okay. Seeing none, Mr. Davis, can you help us understand this agenda?
Absolutely. So today is Housekeeping Day on the regular agenda for ordinances. This is implementing a statute that was passed in the last Florida legislative session requiring that Platts be approved by an administrative authority and not by all of you. The statute previously required that all Platts be approved by the governing body of a city or a county. That has been changed to require administrative review and approval. So what we have done is we have the, an administrative process by which that will all go through. The developer or the applicant will get a seven-day, you know, cursory completeness review. They get feedback in those seven days, and then the Public Works Director, my office, and the Planning Department all do review. We submit that review to the city manager, and then he is the administrative authority that either approves- that either approves or denies those Platts.
Okay. So this is implementing a law passed by the legislature?
Correct.
And previously, did the city council have any ability to approve or disapprove Platts?
Only, I mean, so your, your review was entirely limited by whether the plat met your code and met the statute? So if it checked the boxes, you had to approve it. If it didn't check the boxes, you couldn't approve it. There was no discretion at all.
Okay.
So this makes, it makes a lot of sense for it to be an administrative process.
Okay. All right. Any comments from the council?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Ms. Vazoni, we have a motion and a second. Please call roll.
Vice Mayor German.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Casto.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Coburn.
Yes.
Councilman Register.
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor Tedder.
Yes, ma'am. Moving on to regular agenda item number two, ordinance number sixteen seventy. Mr. Davis?
An ordinance of the City of Panama City Beach, Florida, amending chapter eight of the city's code of ordinances in sections three dot oh-two dot oh-three and three dot oh-two dot oh-nine of the city's land development code, providing for new definitions and determinations of substantial damage and substantial improvement, repealing all ordinances in conflict, providing for severability, scrivener's errors, liberal interpretation, modifications, codification, and providing for an effective date.
Okay. Is there any public comment on this item? Any public comment? Seeing none, Mr. Davis, help us understand this item.
Okay, another housekeeping item, implementing a new Florida statute. So for the National Flood Insurance Program, we are required as participants in that program to require that properties that have been either substantially damaged or substantially repaired, above fifty percent of their market value, meet, comply with, with existing current codes related to flood, flood management. The city's prior practice and what was common, I think amongst most cities, was that to determine that, you would look back to determine the aggregate amount of damage or repairs in a, in a year, and so you would take the cumulative value of those damages or repairs to determine whether a property has met those thresholds and has to comply with new codes. The statute that was passed in the last legislative session prohibits us from doing any sort of look-back, so we only have to consider the project that's been presented to the city in that application to determine those value markers. So we can't do any, this is just removing the ability to do any sort of look-back at aggregate repairs or damages.
Okay.
And again, completely done to comply with state statute.
Okay. And so this, how may I understand, this look-back evaluation is to decide the amount for national floodplain?
Correct. So, so what the city is required to do is make a determination, let's say that your house was completely destroyed in a hurricane, right? At that point, you have, you will have sustained substantial damage above fifty percent of the market value of the structure that was damaged. In that instance, the city has to require that the new, that all the new floodplain, that the rebuild comply with new floodplain regulations, whatever they are at the time. So it removes any grandfathering that may have existed for that building. What this, and so what we have had in the past is some properties that have been damaged, they may slowly repair piecemeal, one, one issue at a time. And so what the city's practice has always been is to take those piecemeal repairs in the aggregate to determine those values, and what this statute does is prohibits that practice. So if a homeowner wants to only repair their roof, then we would only consider the value of that roof repair. If they come back later and need to do foundation work, we would not take the value of that roof repair in combination with the foundation work to determine that valuation. We would go piece by piece.
Okay.
And that's what we are required to do by statute now.
Okay. So it's just implementing statute? Any questions or comments from the council? No? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Davis. Clear explanation? Complicated subject?
It won't be. It'll be a bunch of individual invoices.
Is there any motion or?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we, we have a motion to approve and a second. Ms. Vazoni, please call roll.
Vice Mayor German.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Casto.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Coburn.
Yes.
Councilman Register.
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor Tedder.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, moving on to regular agenda item number three, ordinance number sixteen seventy-one. Mr. Davis?
An ordinance of the City of Panama City Beach, Florida, amending chapters one, five, and nine of the land development code to add a definition for certified recovery residence and establish a process for the review of reasonable accommodation requests for certified recovery residences pursuant to section three ninety-seven dot four eighty-seven Florida statutes, repealing all ordinances in conflict, providing for severability, scrivener's errors, liberal interpretation, modifications, and codification, and providing for an effective date.
Okay. Any public comment on this item? Any public comment? Okay. Seeing none, Mr. Davis?
Okay, another housekeeping item for you today. This is again complying with a new state statute that we are required to do. So in the last legislative session, a new amendment to chapter three ninety-seven was passed, which requires, which requires by January first of next year that the city pass an ordinance creating a process by which recovery residences can seek accommodations from our code that are necessary under the Fair Housing Act and the Americans with Disability Act. So this is creating that process by which those recovery residences can, can go through that process and seek accommodations. We've built in kind of what the criteria for seeking an accommodation are, the criteria for review of those accommodation requests, and also a process by which those residences can appeal the city's determination. The initial review is done by the city's planning and building department, and then any appeals would go to the city manager's office.
Okay. So it's just establishing a process for review for accommodations under the ADA and the Fair Housing Act?
Correct. It's not granting any rights or privileges or kind of creating any, you know, putting anything, allowing anything necessarily, it's just creating that process by which they can come seek that accommodation.
Yeah, and then, okay. Questions or comments from the council?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Vazoni, please call roll.
Vice Mayor German.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Casto.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Coburn.
Yes.
Councilman Register.
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor Tedder.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, moving on to regular agenda item number four, ordinance sixteen seventy-two. Mr. Davis?
An ordinance of the City of Panama City Beach, Florida, amending section ten oh-three of the land development code related to continuing public hearings, repealing all ordinances in conflict, providing for severability, scrivener's errors, liberal interpretation, modifications, and codification, and providing for an effective date.
Any public comment on this item? No one wants to spice it up? Okay, seeing none. Mr. Davis, help us understand this item.
Okay, one more housekeeping item for you guys today. So it has long been the city's practice and the practice across Florida that a lot of times you have public hearings, quasi-judicial hearings, to consider land applications or other various things, and from time to time, those, something happens and there's a motion to continue that hearing to the next meeting. The, the longstanding practice has always been that the applicant doesn't need to re-advertise that hearing if it is continued to, to the next meeting. That has actually never been in our code. The Florida Legislature adopted that same standard in the, in the Florida statutes recently, and so we thought that it would probably be prudent to go ahead and codify that practice in our code as well. So this is just codifying what we've always done and what the Florida, Florida Legislature has blessed specifically.
Okay. So it's establishing so that folks who are looking at a code can see that we're buying by the code and stay well.
Correct.
Questions, comments?
It'd take a lot of spice for these. Someone wanted to spice it up, it'd take a lot.
Yeah.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve in a second. Ms. Vazoni, please call roll.
Vice Mayor German.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Casto.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Coburn.
Yes.
Councilman Register.
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor Tedder.
Yes, ma'am. Okay. Moving on to regular agenda item number five, resolution number twenty-six twenty-eight. Mr. Davis?
A resolution of the City of Panama City Beach, Florida, approving a grant agreement in the amount of twenty-two thousand, seven hundred and thirty-two dollars, fifty-three cents, with the Department of Financial Services for the purchase of a decontamination washer for the fire department, and authorizing a budget, budget amendment to reflect the receipt and appropriation of these funds.
Okay. Any public comment on this item? Any public comment? Seeing none. Chief Morgan, come up and help us understand this item, please.
Good morning, Mayor, Council. What we have before you is a request to accept this grant, the Florida's Department of Financial Services. So what this grant will allow us to do is purchase our third and final extractor, which is a heavy-duty industrial washing machine made specifically to take care of our turnout gear for our firefighters once they return from going into ideal age environments. Helps them remove all the toxins from that gear and makes it safer when they put back on when they move into the next, next scene. So we have two of these already at existing stations, and this one will go in our new station thirty-two once it's completed.
Okay. And Ms. White, or Mr. Whitman, there's a grant associated with this?
Yeah, this is a grant. You guys are approving the grant on this.
Okay.
In a budget amendment.
So we're approving a grant? All right, great. And so this is just to keep our firefighters safe when they, when they go into these buildings? There can be a lot of stuff that's toxic that gets churned up, gets attached to the clothes that needs to be washed so that they stay as safe as possible after going into these buildings? That's great. Comments or questions for Chief Morgan from the council?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a pair of seconds. Ms. Vazoni, please call roll.
Vice Mayor German.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Casto.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Coburn.
Yes.
Councilman Register.
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor Tedder.
Yes, ma'am. Now move on to regular agenda item number six, resolution twenty-six twenty-nine. Mr. Davis?
A resolution of the City of Panama City Beach, Florida, authorizing a yield reduction payment to the Internal Revenue Service in the amount of seven hundred and forty-nine thousand, eight hundred and seventy dollars and eighteen cents, relating to the City of Panama City Beach Capital Improvement Revenue Bonds Series twenty-twenty for the Front Beach Road project, and authorizing a budget amendment.
Okay. Any public comment on this item? Any public comment? Seeing none, Ms. White?
Yeah.
Now, Ms. White, could you help us understand this item?
I will try. So these are, this item is to comply with the IRS arbitrage rules.
Yeah.
Which basically, as a municipality, the city has the ability to issue tax-exempt bonds, so the holder of those bonds pays no income tax on it. So what the IRS has done is put arbitrage rules in place so that public entities don't issue more debt than what they need to do their projects for the public purpose for which they're intended, and to avoid having those funds sit there and basically earn more money than you're paying the bondholder who's not paying any tax. So in this case, these relate to tax-exempt bonds that we issued in twenty-twenty related to the CRA project, and the pace of construction has been a little bit slower than anticipated, and the interest rate environment has been one of rising interest rates. So those two factors combined resulted in us earning significantly more money than what we're paying the bondholders, and as such, we have to rebate that excess to the IRS.
Okay. So the bonds were for Front Beach Road, dominantly segment three and segment four-one. What's, what's the status on segment three right now?
They're about completed on that. They're finishing up on the utilities. You notice all the top of the poles have been topped off. Hopefully, we get this wrapped up in the next month, month and a half. We should be done with everything.
Okay. And so we earned extra interest on those bonds because the market went up after we issued those bonds, which meant we got more money and IRS wants some of it.
That's exactly correct.
Yep. And that is also, one of the reasons this council has been very aggressive about making sure these projects get done quickly, so we have to, so we can avoid these kinds of adjustments. So I commend the entire council for their focus on the CRA. Any questions or comments from the council? Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, Ms. Vazoni, to approve. Ms. Vazoni, please call roll.
Vice Mayor German.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Casto.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Coburn.
Yes.
Councilman Register.
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor Tedder.
Yes, ma'am. No one enjoys Tax Day. Okay, moving on to regular agenda item number seven, resolution twenty-six thirty. Mr. Davis?
A resolution of the City of Panama City Beach, Florida, approving a grant agreement in the amount of thirty thousand dollars with the State of Florida Department of Environmental Protection for the purchase of various beach safety equipment and supplies, and authorizing a budget amendment to reflect the receipt and appropriation of these funds.
Okay. Any public comment on this item? Any public comment? Seeing none. Chief, help us understand this, this item and the grant associated with it.
Yes, sir. So beach safety staff, along with city staff, are constantly looking for ways to minimize financial impact to our budget when it comes to protecting our beaches. Subsequently, they went out for a grant offered by the DEP through Coastal Protection, and we were awarded in this thirty thousand dollar grant with a, with a match component. This would directly enhance our operational ability on the sand. It provides binoculars, ATVs, AEDs, all the subsequent, and a big, big component of it is a drone dedicated just to beach safety. If you've seen a lot of the news footage over the, the course of the summer, a lot of agencies are starting to use drones to drop inflatables, just another tool in the toolbox for us to help take care of our community.
Okay. So, so there's a grant, there's a match, it's gonna provide mobility equipment, life safety equipment of varieties, of variety kinds. Sounds, sounds good to me. Any questions or comments from the council for the chief? No? Thank you, chief. Good job on finding the grant.
Absolutely.
Any motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve in a second. Ms. Vazoni, please call roll.
Vice Mayor German.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Casto.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Coburn.
Yes.
Councilman Register.
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor Tedder.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, we now move on to regular agenda item number eight, resolution twenty-six thirty-one. Mr. Davis?
A resolution of the City of Panama City Beach, Florida, approving an agreement with Mainline Construction, LLC, for the Forenzo Avenue overflow parking lot improvements project in the total amount of one million, forty-eight thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars and seventy-two cents, and author, and authorizing the execution of qualifying change orders in a total amount not to exceed one hundred, four thousand, eight hundred and fifty-five dollars.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any public comment on this item? Any public comment on this item? Okay. Seeing none, Mr. Adair, looks like you have a presentation.
Excuse me. Good morning, council. John Adair, Public Works. All right, this one's a fun one. Couple years back, staff was directed to help address the parking issues that we've noticed on council meetings, and so we went forward with the design and permitting of the, the lot across the street, across Forenzo Avenue. Will add forty-three parking spaces total, including two handicap parking spaces. Has underground exfiltration, also has a small, little pond located on site. It will be secured with gate accesses on both Forenzo and Arnold. So, and small little sidewalk just across the street so everybody can get across.
Okay.
We went out to bid. We had five contractors respond to the bid. Mainline Construction was the low bidder. Their staff reviewed their bid, also the engineer of record reviewed their bid, both recommending awarding it to Mainline Construction. Felt like we got a really great price. You can see the engineer's opinion of probable cost, so I, I think prices, prices are looking You can see the engineer's opinion of probable cost, so I think prices are looking pretty good, so feel pretty good about it. Just to give you an idea of the construction timeline, so if council elects to approve today, then we should be issuing a notice to proceed around the first of December. It's about 120-day construction timeline, and then just paperwork and as-built and closing out should be ready by the end of April. That's kind of what we're expecting at this time. With that, I'll entertain any questions?
Okay.
Can you bring up the design again?
Sure.
Thank you. I have one question.
Yeah.
The access on Arnold, is that an in and an out?
Yes, sir.
And it's gated?
Yes, sir.
Do you think that's going to cause any problems on Arnold as far as traffic flow?
I would not expect so. The gates swing inward, as you can see.
They'll have to stop to get in. They'll have to wait for the gate to open. So if you've got two or three people trying to pull into the parking lot, now they're in Arnold. Yeah, how deep is that refuge area there? Off the main road?
Mr. Whitman?
This is going to be used just for employee parking lot, so most of that traffic will be early morning or late afternoon, but most of them will probably be coming in Forenzo if we see an issue with that. We can direct staff to use that area.
Yeah.
On Forenzo instead of 79.
I was curious, because I mean, I'm concerned about that and making the access on Arnold exit only.
We could definitely look into that and, you know, make that an option if it definitely becomes a priority.
Just an observation, a concern.
As the city manager, you know, this is gated access, it's for employee parking, so we can definitely direct employees to use the access.
So that is going to be solely for employee parking mostly?
Yes, sir.
Yes. Okay.
Will employees that work in this building be required to park over there?
We're going to get all the white vehicles that you see out here will be parked over there. Majority of the parking lot will be used for the employees. We fill that up so our visitors and our guests can use the main parking lot.
That'd be great, yeah, that's great. Does it have to be gated, guys?
For security for our vehicles at night, yes.
Okay.
What type of gate? Is this the barrier arm, or are you going to have a big iron gate, or do you know yet?
I believe there are the swinging gates that match in the middle.
The external fencing around matches up with the gates?
The external fencing on the residential side is going to be a white vinyl fence to just try to give a better aesthetic appeal to the residents. And then we have a four-foot high fence along Arnold to match the CRA, you know, unification standards. So that'll be a smaller, you know, gate or fence.
So the backside here is all going to be white vinyl all the way leading up until it meets at Arnold?
And on Forenzo as well. Forenzo will have a six-foot fence. The four-foot fence is a requirement on Arnold.
CRA side.
The CRA side, correct.
Okay. That was my only concern.
Okay, yeah, I think it's a relevant concern. Yeah, worth looking into, and I think something city manager Whitman said is very important. You know, this is employee parking, but it's the free-up parking in front of city hall for council meetings, planning board meetings, the other meetings that happen here, so it makes it easier for the public to access the city hall, especially during busy city council meetings. So I think that's a great improvement. Thank you, Mr. Adair, for addressing this.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, sir. Any discussion or motion from the council?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve. Ms. Fazoni, please call roll.
Vice Mayor Jarman.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Casto.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Coburn.
Yes.
Councilman Register.
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor Tedder.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, we now move on to the city manager's report.
Two items today, sir. First, we have two positions on our pension boards that are, both candidates requested that they be reappointed. They've sent an email to the city clerk. One is on the employee side, which is Joy, she'd like to be reappointed, and the other one is at the police department side on the pension, and it is Sergeant Thomas, and he also would like to be reappointed.
Okay. Any thoughts on the two items on the pension board? Good with reappointing them?
It's great. Good for that.
Motion to reappoint.
Yeah.
Motion, please.
Yeah, we have a motion in a second to reappoint the two existing seats on the pension board. Ms. Fazoni, please call roll.
Vice Mayor Jarman.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Casto.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Coburn.
Yes.
Councilman Register.
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor Tedder.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, second item.
Second item is on the TDC, we got three seats that term out at the end of December. The two of the seats are council appointees, which is Vice Mayor Jarman and Councilmember Ethan Register, and then we have a non-collector, which is Gary Walsenham. The two council members, I believe, want to run, would like to be reappointed. Gary Walsenham has made mention that he does not want to be reappointed, so that'd be a non-collector's position.
Okay. You guys want to talk about how we want to do the non-collector position first? Just do it the way, same way we did last time?
Yeah, I think so.
Where we all submit our nominees and then talk about it in the next meeting?
Yeah, I like that. Fine with that.
Yep, it worked well last time?
Yeah.
We're good on that one. Okay, for the other two items, they both want to be reappointed. I mean, I will say, TDC's really helped us out, especially with the fully funding of the lifeguard program. I think you've done a good job. There's also, TDC is tremendously important for the hip ordinance as well, and I know both the council members were working very well on that, so I think you all are doing a good job on there.
I think we got the mobile command bus as well.
Oh, yeah, the mobile command bus.
Beach access walkovers, there's been some good things that TDC's really leaned in on and.
Yeah. There is some.
We need a motion to reappoint these two guys.
You do.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to reappoint Councilman Jarman and Councilman Register.
Yeah, before we go forward with that, I do have a request. You know, a lot of that stuff does happen at the TDC meeting. If the council members who are on the TDC can come tell us what happens at these meetings, I think it would be very good for the public to know. So that'll be my request. We have a motion.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Ms. Fazoni, please call roll.
Vice Mayor Jarman.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Casto.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Coburn.
Yes.
Councilman Register.
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor Tedder.
Yes, ma'am. Okay.
That's all I have.
That's all you have. Mr. Davis?
Just a quick update on our, the comings and goings in Tallahassee, Florida. The legislative session is set to start in January. They are in committee weeks now. We have submitted our appropriations request consistent with your legislative priorities that you passed. One of them is for one phase of our expansion of McKelvey Water Plant, so this would be for a new pump station over there. As you guys are aware, the Utilities Department is planning to upgrade the pump station as well as new tanks for McKelvey to better serve the east end of the beach. So we've applied for an appropriation to fund that pumping station, and then we've also applied for a replacement of the Lakeview Circle Bridge that goes across that neighborhood right there. And so both of those have been submitted and are supported by our local state rep, Griffiths, and Senator Trump, so we thank them.
Yep, yeah, they do a great job of supporting us and supporting Beach. Thank you for that update. Any questions for Mr. Davis on his city attorney slash legislative update? I would just ask to keep us informed as the legislative session goes ahead. As people may have noticed during this council meeting, a lot of stuff that happens at the legislative session comes down to here.
Yes.
And we have to implement it.
Lots of bills that we're watching at the moment.
Okay.
That we don't like, so we'll, you know, keep hoping they lose steam.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Council comments? We'll just go this way. Councilman Casto?
Yes, I'd just like to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. Enjoy this time of the year with your family, and everybody has a wonderful holiday season.
Okay.
I review everything that's given to me. That should answer that question. Everyone, happy Thanksgiving. We'll have another meeting before then, and I'll see everybody who wants to show up next month.
Okay.
Just happy Thanksgiving. Thanks for all you guys do. Thank you. I feel like we have the best residents in the world right here in Panama City Beach. We have the greatest staff, so keep it up. We've got another wonderful year ahead of us, so a lot to be thankful for here in the City of Panama City Beach. Thank you.
Okay.
I'd just like to recognize Mary and Bob back there, and all the folks out at the VFW Ten Triple Nickel, as you call it, for organizing the memorial service that we had on Tuesday, and thank Chief Talamantes for coming out and being the keynote speaker there. He was very motivating and lighthearted with a little bit of humor mixed into it, so. And I'd like to wish the mayor, belated, happy birthday, and everyone else a happy Thanksgiving. There's lots of great community events coming up in the next month, so get out there and show your community spirit.
Yeah. Thank you, VFW, and thank you also to the Parks and Rec Department for setting that up, and I think it was a very good program. It's nice to see chief all dressed up. He gave a great speech, was well-attended as well. I do have one item, because we're about to get ready to approve the meeting calendar for next year. We missed it last year, but it had been done in the past, doing a state of the city address to just highlight what the city has done over the last year. Like to get council approval to add that to the meeting agenda, or the meeting calendar.
Can you say that again, Mayor?
Yeah, sorry, I'm a little stuffed up today. So there was a, there used to be a state of the city address, so just kind of do a public address of what has happened over the last year.
Right.
Didn't do it last year, want to keep that tradition rolling.
That's fine.
Yeah, motion to approve that.
Yeah, that was a great thing that was started.
Good thing.
Yeah.
Or just head nods, or what do you guys need?
We'll just add on the calendar next month, and then you can approve it at that time.
Okay.
Okay. Okay.
Do you have a date that you're going to do it, or?
I think it was in March, and then we can coordinate on one-on-one with folks' calendars to make sure. Yeah, so similar to the, when it was done previously, which was in March.
Is that not a council meeting that is just an address?
It's not a council meeting. It's going to actually take and advertise it.
Okay, fantastic.
Yeah, you know, I end up doing a decent number of presentations. I call them the road shows to different groups. It'd be nice to get one done for everyone, okay? Is there any, I believe there was actually a motion on the table.
Right, Ethan. Councilman Register did move.
You did have a motion, but we said we didn't need the motion, so.
We can do it either way. You can finish up that, get it on that, but I'm going to bring the schedule back in December so you can approve all your meetings for the 2026 season.
Okay, so we'll get a hard date next meeting. Yeah, so we'll get a hard date and do it next meeting, okay? So we have, yeah.
That's good.
Did you want to withdraw your motion?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
We'll just ignore it. Yeah, thanks. I guess I didn't get a second. I was trying to support you, man.
No, I appreciate it. I appreciate, no, I appreciate it.
See anybody jumping out there with a second?
Yeah, I know. Well, you know, we got consent to put it on, and we'll just do the entire thing as a pass. Okay, I appreciate that.
I want to get it done. I mean, I'm ready, so.
You want to get it? Why don't you just?
Just pick it up, let's do it.
Yeah, let's do it, okay.
No, I'm kidding.
Okay, okay.
Go ahead.
And then one other item, you know, I've learned from our city manager that we have to treat everyone fairly, and if we do for one, we have to do for everyone, and so we have, in this council, when it's someone's birthday on the day of a council meeting, we do sing them "Happy Birthday," and it is city manager Whitman's birthday.
I'm going to turn my mic off.
Everyone join me in singing city manager Whitman's "Happy Birthday." And city manager, if you would just look this way so you don't see who's actually singing. One, two, three. [Singing] Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear you. Happy birthday to you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
And.
So how long ago was your birthday?
It was on Tuesday.
Oh, well, then I think we should sing "Happy Birthday."
I agree. I agree.
It's only on council meetings. It's only on council meetings.
I agree, let's do it.
[Singing] Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear steer. Happy birthday to you.
Here we go.
Seems like a setup.
I have a part I left.
All right, everyone, one more time. All right. Just everyone have a wonderful and safe Thanksgiving, and we will see you next month. God bless.